Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We will call the meeting to order. And our first order of business tonight is our invocation on our pledge of allegiance. So I would ask that Pastor Robert Castro from the Calvary Chapel is here tonight to lead us in our invocation, and then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to be here to bring the invocation, and having said that, if you'll bow your hearts with me, please. Father in heaven, Creator of the whole universe, as we come before you, Lord, and we pray that your Spirit, your Holy Spirit would be here tonight and give each one of these council members wisdom, and, Lord, I want to lift up our city. I know you love our city, and, Lord, from our first responders to all the different departments represented here tonight, Lord, we pray for your guidance and protection. Lord, for each item that's going to be discussed here tonight, Lord, we pray for wisdom on that, and pray that you would guide the council and those that are going to be bringing questions up. Lord, that what is best for our city and best for our citizens here in Casa Grande was what would go forward. And again, we thank you for tonight, and thank you for your protection over all of this, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you very much.
Our pledge? We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Robert. Thank you, Anthony. All right, next is the roll call. Everyone's here except Donna, she's on her sabbatical, so I'd entertain a motion to make an excuse for her.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so please note Donna is excused and everyone else is present. Thank you, Gloria. Next is item C, which is the minutes.
Mayor McFarland, move that we approve of minutes of the council regular meeting of February 5th, 2024, as well as acceptance of the minutes of the Casa Grande Fire Personnel Retirement Board meeting of August 22nd, 2023, consider the acceptance of the minutes of the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board, December 21st, 2023, and also the minutes from the Arts and Culture Commission meeting of January 8th, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Community Recreation Advisory Board regular meeting of June 22nd, 2023.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and play the claims dated January 31st, 2024 through February 13th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one.
Yep.
Okay. Lisa is abstaining. Okay, we just need a simple majority for that, right? Okay, thank you. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes? Staff have any changes, Larry, anything?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone up here have any changes, anything you want to... Okay, all right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we do have some special presentations tonight. So the first is item F1, swearing in of our new police officers. Congratulations, gentlemen. And Malcolm Buckner, Cody Norah, no, I butchered that really bad. How do you say it again?
Norah.
Norah, okay. Sorry, Cody. I'll just call you Cody, is that right? All right. And Trey Jufre and Joshua Samuel. So, gentlemen, if you would come forward.
I'm...
I'm Malcolm Buckner.
I'm Joshua Samuel.
I'm Trey Jufre.
I'm Chris Norah.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. General clerk, you're used to be... You're advisory.
Yeah.
I got the free, right?
Yep. I knew I got that one.
All right, our next agenda item is item F2, which is a presentation discussion related to the election update.
Yes.
Gloria?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I've been serving as a city clerk and conducting elections for, gosh, I guess I might as well say it, like 32 years, so that sort of tells you how long I've been doing this, a very, very long time. And throughout my election years, we've had some election changes. This past February 9th, at after nine o'clock, our governor signed House Bill 2785. Initially, I didn't get word until Saturday. Once I got the word, I thought, oh, my God, this is going to make some very drastic changes to our individuals who were circulating petitions. And that is because House Bill 2785 affected numerous sections of Title 16, which is our elections procedures. But what specifically triggered an alarm for me was an amendment to section, gosh, what section is that? Section 16664, Section 20, which changed our primary election date. Our primary election date was scheduled for August 6th, 2024, and this House bill changed it to July 30th of 2024. What that meant for us here and throughout the state of Arizona, that we had our candidates currently circulating petitions, and we also had our equal electronic petitions that our candidates were also circulating. So I was in here that following Sunday after this bill, trying to notify all of the candidates that you had to pull back the petitions that you were circulating, your hard copies, and you had to close, they had to close their electronic nomination petitions, so I could create a new one, and they could go in and establish a new electronic nomination petition. The initial analysis from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns was that if anybody signed the petition after the bill was signed on February 9th, those nomination petitions may be considered invalid. So we needed to make sure that we were able to get new nomination petitions to all of our candidates. So we were able to do that, and we've updated all of our information online, and our hard copies are also now updated to have our new election date of July 30th. Another section that might affect us, we're not sure yet, the league is currently doing an analysis of that also, is that there was another section in Title 16 under 16550, which now states in there that during any election in which there is a federal office being considered, that cities might have to be open, what says that cities and towns would have to be open the weekend before the election and the weekend after, in order to cure any early voting ballots, any provisional ballots. However, the city of Casa Grande contracts with Pinal County to provide those services. So currently, the league is doing an analysis of whether or not that would apply to cities if you contract with a county. So those are the two big areas that affected cities and towns. There were a number of other changes in Title 16, but primarily, those are the two sections that affected the cities. So just wanted to give you a quick update, since we did call for the election already. We have posted the information on our website and have all the information on hard copy also available with the corrected date. No, Brett, if you wanted to add anything else?
No, I think... Gloria, thank you. The only point is, I think the league had kind of come out and put everyone in a panic, you know, regarding the ballots, but, you know, my reading of the bill is that if someone had circulated, was circulating petitions with that August 6th date on them, they won't be invalid just because of that date. Can't promise you that, you know, but it would certainly be something on a challenge only. We will not be turning anybody's petitions away on the basis of the date of the signature and what they had. I think it really impacts any candidates that begin circulating petitions after that, February 9th date in particular. But to Gloria's point, best practices would say, if you're starting a new petition, a new page or otherwise, use that July 30th date just to be safe.
Any questions from anyone? Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, then we'll move to, there's no action on that one, so we'll move to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to remove from the agenda? Anybody from the audience? The public. Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor...
Oh, go ahead.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, next is our public comments. I do have two speaker cards, but I think they're for specific public hearings, so we'll hold those for the public hearing, if that's okay with you all who have signed this. I think one's L1, one's L5, so both of those are public hearings tonight, so you'll have an opportunity then to speak during that timeframe, unless you want to speak now. It's certainly open, so. I am opening the floor, so if there's anybody who would like to address the council, just with a reminder that these comments are not agendized, so we cannot comment on them. And I'd like to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for our records. So anybody here would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public comments, and we'll move to our boards and commissions. We have several appointments tonight. First of all is J1, which is considered the appointment of Gary Rich and Mindy McWorder-Dawkins to the Community Services Advisory Board with terms to extend through February 1st, 2027. Are either of them here? I don't see them. All right, well, just first of all, I want to thank them for their service. This is a volunteer position, and we do appreciate the public and our constituents participating in this process. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve item J1 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations to Gary Rich and Mindy McWorder-Dawkins. Thank you both for your service. Item J2 is considered the appointment of Scott Elliott to the Airport Advisory Board with terms to extend through September 8th of 2026. I don't think I see Scott here either. So, anyway, just thank you to him and appreciate his willingness to serve. He is a new member, actually, on the board, so. Any comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Scott, for your service. And the last one is J3. This is considered the appointment of Don Sherbo to the Board of Adjustments to a term to extend through November 17th of 2026. Don is not here either, so, okay. Well, thank you, Don, for your service, appreciate it. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve his appointment.
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations to Don Sherbo, and thank you again for your service. Next, we'll move into ordinances, resolutions. Item K1, consider the approval of the installation of Bob Mitchell's tribute marker at the forefront of City Hall. Scott?
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, it's my privilege tonight to represent the Bob Mitchell Tribute Committee, following up on the presentation that we made this evening in study session. I should point out that the conversation has been involved with Bob's family and Connie. Bob's wife was not able to be with us this evening. Hopefully, she's watching at home. But we've given you the basics of the where and the why and the how, understanding that this is a recommendation coming from a committee that was put together. I want to acknowledge the leadership of Jerry Sullivan in putting the committee together and guiding the committee through the process. Tremendous involvement from everybody. I especially enjoyed myself listening to and sharing stories about Bob Mitchell over the course of time, particularly with John Cashner and Nick DePadre, who I don't interface with that much, and so it was just delightful to be able to share those stories along the way. Again, this is going to be a public fundraising campaign. There'll be no city funds involved. The Kiwanis Club locally is going to be kind of heading that up, and any funds that are collected in excess of the cost of the marker will be put into a scholarship fund honoring Bob as well. Again, we propose to put the tribute marker out in front of City Hall here, facing the building, over by the clock area, and you've seen the picture of the monument marker this evening. It has the cougar head indicating Bob's many years of service as a teacher, and then the city logo is recognition of him as appointing his only commissioner, as the mayor, a city council member, and then his deputy city magistrate as well, and then we'll be using his council picture in the middle of that marker as well. So with that, answer any questions. Former Mayor Walton and Jerry are still here from the committee. They would stand to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Any questions?
Questions.
I went through it in study session, so I think you guys answered all the questions we probably had. So, all right, appreciate it. Thank you, Scott. Well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the installation of Bob Mitchell's tribute marker at the forefront of City Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a couple seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It is done. You just have to raise some money now. Let us know if you can share that with Larry, so maybe we can all help participate. All right, next is our public meetings and public hearings. This is item L1. This is considering the approval of resolution number 5624, and also approval of an ordinance number 3408. Obviously, we'll vote on them separately, but I'm assuming you're going to talk about them both together.
Correct. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the item here tonight is known as the roping ridge annexation, and as you mentioned, we're going to be discussing the recommended adoption of the infrastructure and services plan associated with the annexation, the annexation itself, and then also authorizing initial zoning designations for this property. Little background information about the roping ridge area, it's slightly over 218 acres in size, and it has been found to meet the statutory requirements for annexation eligibility regarding contiguity. If you notice, the boundary of the proposed annexation area goes up to Early Road on the north, where it adjoins the current city boundary, and then about 600 feet or so west of Arizona, where it also adjoins the city boundary, and then it does dip to the south at different levels. Zion Street is one southern border, and then, as you see, going further west, it sits parallel, but not all the way, to Jimmy Kerr, and then on the east side of the annexation area, it's along the Colorado Street alignment. In October, city council did hold a public hearing regarding this, or an initial annexation meeting, I should say, regarding this proposed annexation. There were a few members in the audience who had raised some concerns. There was objection raised by a property owner within the annexation area, just at the, what would be the northeast corner of Peert and Zion. They were concerned that they would no longer be allowed the same uses once they were annexed into the city than what they had in the county. Other property owners, however, were in the audience to express support. One member did express the desire to also be included, have their property included within the annexation, however, at that point, it was too late. Then on January 24th, there was a signed annexation petition filed at Pinal County, and of all the signatures gathered by the applicant, it represented 53% of the ownership within the annexation area, and of those 53% of the owners who signed was reflective of 90% of the total overall value of the property within the annexation area. So that did meet other statutory requirements regarding eligibility. You have to have 51% of the ownership sign, and of the ownership that's signed, it has to represent at least 51% of the value. So it met both tests. So as we indicated, the request this evening is to adopt the infrastructure and services plan associated with this annexation via resolution, and then also the approval of the annexation itself and the initial zoning via ordinance. Now, currently, I should say that upon annexation, we are requesting the following initial zoning designations. The largest area would go from general rural to urban ranch, identified in green, and then where Horizon Health is located in blue, would go from a county zoning of transitional to single-family residential, because that's most similar to their current zoning, without giving them more zoning rights. And then up towards the northeastern area of the annexation area, there's two parcels that will go from multifamily in the county to R3, which is our multifamily residential, and that's in that yellow goldish color, and then the red is going from C3, which is a county business-type zoning, to B2. It is recommended that the mayor and city council approve a resolution adopting the infrastructure and services plan, and it also is recommended that city council approve an ordinance adopting the annexation of the following zone districts, Urban Ranch, R1, B2, and R3. And that concludes my presentation.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff. Just a quick question.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you. Hold on just a minute. In regards to the zoning, you made mention of there was maybe some residents that rejected it. I'm looking at, right at Zion Street, and the right there was blocked off, is that because they did not want to be annexed in?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, are you asking why the cutoff was at Zion?
Correct, correct. Instead of right on down.
Right. Well, it was mainly to meet the eligibility requirements for contiguity. In order to draw the annexation boundary that was acceptable to meet all of the criteria, the main petitioner of the annexation needed to include some additional parcels that weren't his, and I think he was trying to be choiceful as to not... his, and I think he was trying to be choiceful as to not include too many extra parcels, because that would mean that those parcel owners would be potentially not wanting to participate in the annexation, but it was decided to cut it off at Zion, all of, all of those parcels on the north side of Zion needed to be included, because it would leave little enclaves of county, which would, which would call into question the eligibility for annexation, because you'd be leaving these narrow gaps of county.
Mr. Lavender?
James, I'm just curious on, you said 53% of the owners voted in favor and 47% didn't, what was the actual vote totals?
So there, there is 13 unique ownership, owners within the annexation area, so we got seven owners of property to sign.
And then how many owners didn't vote?
There would be six.
No, you said there only 90% of the, the property value didn't vote it, so there were some that did not vote, correct?
Oh, of, of those seven signatories that we've received, the, the land that they owned within the annexation area equaled 90% of the overall value of the property within the annexation area.
So the seven owners, the seven people that voted yes owned 90% of the?
They, they owned land that, that was representative of 90% of the value.
So all the, all the owners voted?
So the, there's not really a vote per se, but they have to sign an annexation petition, and what we do is we look through those signatures to verify if those signatures are in fact of the owners reflected per the assessor records, and we also look at the assessed value of their property to, to come to that decision.
So there are 13 people that could have signed, and only seven did sign?
Correct.
And six chose not to sign?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do we know if they asked them all, or?
I, I do not know, I, I would be willing to guess that he did not ask the person who was here to express opposition, and, and then, we did, the city did reach out to the Casa Grande Historic Society, who owns the cemetery, and, and they didn't indicate that they weren't willing to sign, but they had some questions, and unfortunately, time got away in trying to schedule an opportunity to discuss with them why they maybe should consider signing, or maybe some reasons why they shouldn't, and, and we didn't ultimately obtain a signature from them.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
James, I know I asked you this last time we saw this, and I apologize for asking again, but you touched on the cemetery that's there, is, is there any special concerns or protections for, for the cemetery?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I think that's a, a good question that we will have to evaluate when the property around the cemetery goes in for its rezone from, from urban ranch to whatever ultimate special zone, zoning that may ultimately be proposed. At that point, we could look at the, at implementing certain conditions that will help buffer the cemetery property from development near it, and then again, there'll be opportunity at the major site plan to ensure that site features are taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no more questions, this is a public hearing, so, and I do have one speaker card for, for this L1, so Tina, do you want to speak?
Just, just for clarification, it is not actually a public hearing, because you've already held that, but you always have the discretion to allow people.
Well, since I told her not to come up until this time, then I think I'll allow it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Mayor and city council and staff, thank you so much, I'm Tina Cramp, I live at 15188 West Early Road, so I'm definitely right in the northwest section, that is still the county. I've been had the opportunity to attend all the planning and zoning meetings in the process of this whole thing, and also previously at a city council meeting. Just a couple of questions for clarification, when the north, because it speaks in here, and I don't know which one of these ordinances, so I'm just talking at the beginning, so I know that it talks about when you're, the Roping Ridge Annexation, we're, I'm, we're okay with the, obviously the incorporation, we're not speaking against that, we're not, because we were, obviously, the, the residents that live over there in our section is for the annexation, because we want to start the process to also pull our properties in. So the annexation's not the question, it's the zoning, the original zoning that is going to go in. You showed a picture well ago with the green, and it's going to the urban ranch on the side where we're at, then down in two more, two more ordinances down further, we're going to change that urban ranch to PAD. In that changing to the PAD, which I understand is multi-use, and obviously the perfect fit for right over there, the concern that we have is how that's going to come out, how does that zone out in a PAD, if you could give some clarification on that, because one of the concerns, obviously, that we've had all along, is approving that to be high-density right off the bat, there's no end user yet, and we go straight in for the highest-density approval, and then we all know, because I've been watching this a lot, that it's really difficult, once something is set in one zoning and somebody buys that property, they want to put whatever's already approved on there, and it's an act of Congress almost to get that zoning to be reduced. I would like to see if that is something that's going to be considered, I'd like for you to consider that, let's not approve that right off the bat for R3 right in there, because we're, we're approving a lot of R3, a lot of high-density at this point, for where we're at right now in our city, and be thinking about, I know this is not going to happen in the next year, we know it's going to be down the line, but if we're going to be zoning things and being smart about how we grow our community, and how we develop our community, it would be well worth it to consider, maybe if this is something in the PAD that can be discussed tonight, that maybe we back that down a little bit when we get to that point, and maybe come in at a R2, and then if there's an end user that comes in that says, you know, I really want to put more, we'll have that conversation when that time comes, but that's, that's the concern that we have off the bat, we understand, like I said, we know that that PAD over there going mixed in with some light industrial, and the end use of mixing use over there is a perfect location for that, but just the concern is still out there, going right for the highest density possible when you make the original decision. So consider that, think about that, and if we, it comes back, I'll be back again at another meeting if that comes back up, so, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Probably should have asked that question on the PAD.
Yes, Mayor.
L3.
L3. Yeah, we are going to have a public hearing on L3, which will be the consideration of the PAD for the property across from her property, yes.
All right, well, I'll keep your speaker card, and I'll, if you, if you have a question when we get to L3, then I'll allow you to come back up, how's that? Okay? Okay. So this is on the rezoning, or the annexation, so, any other, anyone else here to, to comment? I mean, it's, again, it's not a public hearing, but I will allow it, since I've made an exception already. All right, seeing none, then we will consider approval of resolution number 5624 first. Gloria?
Resolution number 5624, a resolution of the council in the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Roping Ridge Annexation Area Infrastructure and Services Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5624 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is considering approval of ordinance number 3408.
Ordinance number 3408, an ordinance extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Casa Grande, Pinal County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter 4, Article 7, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Casa Grande, known as the Roping Ridge Annexation, and authorizing initial zoning of urban ranch, single-family, general business, and multifamily residential for certain properties within said territory.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3408 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item L2, which is a public hearing. This is on approval of resolution number 5273.27.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, actually, I would like to talk about this agenda item coupled with the next one on the agenda, if that's possible, because they're kind of joined at the hip.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, and it'll kind of kill two birds with one stone.
That works.
So both of these agenda items are associated with the proposed Peertley Point Planned Area Development, the request would be to rezone the property from what was just now newly established as urban ranch to Peertley Point Planned Area Development, but in so doing, in order for council to consider the PAD zoning, you are also being asked to first consider a minor general plan amendment, as this area is within the Phase 2 growth area of the city, whenever a change of zoning is proposed that results in an increase in density, then council would have to first consider changing the general plan through a minor amendment process to place the property into Phase 1. So, the last agenda item, we talked about the Roping Ridge Annexation Area, the proposed Peertley Point PAD sits on the west side of the annexation area, all of the property west of Peert Road, and I kind of refer to it as the Nevada parcel, because it kind of reminds me of the state of Nevada there. So based on the initial zoning that council had just voted for, this property is now zoned urban ranch, it was general rural, and the county urban ranch is the most equivalent, without providing more uses and entitlements, and it's approximately 108 acres in size. The proposed Peertley Point PAD envisions a light industrial area towards the south side of the PAD, that would be the area closest to Jimmy Kerr, where, where there are already industrial uses, closer to the railroad tracks, closer to transportation routes for possible light industrial development, and then, what's proposed north of there is to serve as a transition from that industrial area to the south and the single-family residential development to the north. So what's proposed along the north side of the PAD is a mixture of both medium-density multifamily, high-density multifamily, and then commercial at the hard corner. As I mentioned, what council will have to consider as well is a minor general plan amendment, currently, this parcel is within the Phase 2 growth area, and the request would be to place it into the Phase 1 growth area. The difference between those two growth areas is just basically Phase 2, or those properties that are determined to be a little bit further away from city services and infrastructure, and being able to demonstrate that the property can be served in a way very similar to Phase 1, and of course, it's very logical, it's immediately contiguous with existing development, and so it can easily be a Phase 1 site, because it's just an extension of existing utilities and services. The staff report goes into the criteria in greater detail, but basically, this is what has to be evaluated when considering minor amendments to the general plan for Phase 2 to Phase 1, and now I would like to talk about the next agenda item, of course, you'll be voting on these separately, but the, the, the real crux of this is the zone change itself from urban ranch to PAD, there is a series of, of criteria that have to be evaluated, the staff report does talk about these in, in more depth, but I want to talk about the two highlighted items specifically, first is conformance with the city's general plan. So, the Peertley Point PAD sits within two general plan land use areas. On the south side, it is within commerce and business, which does support industrial, light industrial-type uses, and so that is fitting for that general plan category, and then the north part of the PAD, that's in the yellow, is within the neighborhoods general plan category. Now neighborhoods does support a mixture of low-density, medium, and high-density development. If a medium, if medium density is proposed, it's limited to a site size of 25 acres, and as you see, that is what this PAD is proposing, a 25-growth acre site for medium density, which is up to 12 dwelling units per acre, and then the neighborhoods general plan category also allows high-density sites, no larger than 20 acres, and that, that is also what is being proposed here. Within the neighborhoods category, high-density is considered up to 24 dwelling units per acre. The neighborhoods category also supports neighborhood-scale commercial on sites no larger than 30 acres, and the, the commercial that is proposed within this PAD is 8.1 acres. I should also indicate that another general plan criteria is that within a half-mile of proposed multifamily, there can't be any more than 20% of properties within that half-mile that are either already designated or developed as multifamily. If it exceeds that 20%, it would be a conflict with the general plan. And so when running the analysis on this site, within a half-mile of this area, there, it, it only hits the R3 area, which is just now been incorporated into the city on the far northeast end of the, the Roping Ridge area, but it's well under the 20% threshold. We also look at goals and action steps that support the proposed use, and so, one of the goals is the spatial form and design of developments in neighborhood areas should be transit-friendly and appropriate to adjoining land uses, and an action step to achieve that goal is to design neighborhoods so that housing, jobs, retail, and community services are within walking and biking distance of each other to provide opportunities for residents to lead a healthy lifestyle. So what this PAD proposes is to design a multi-use area where you do have employment to the south, and then housing for that employment along the north side, as well as a commercial area, so that someone could theoretically work, live, and shop within that, that shape of Nevada there. We also look at the fact that, that, that goal does speak to adjacent properties, and you do have the single-family areas to the north that we do need to be sensitive about with regard to compatibility of multifamily next to the single-family area on the other side of Peert, and on an upcoming slide, I'm going to talk about some of the proposed development standards that help address that compatibility. Another goal, though, talks about developing economically competitive regional centers of commercial activity, and the action step associated with that is to support site design that includes incremental growth strategies and considers opportunities for redevelopment and the next generation of commercial development, so it So it intends to achieve that goal by planning for connectivity between these land use areas so that they support one another. There will potentially be an internal circulation so that people don't have to travel by car. They could, like I mentioned before, work and live and shop relatively within the same area. The other criteria that we look at is the community need. So mixed-use PAD employment base is what the applicant is going for. And this also is ideal where this is proposed because the location has close access to the growing industrial area to the west. So not only is this site itself proposing industrial, but the idea is that this multifamily is well-positioned because of all of the industrial areas not too far west of here that is generating a lot of employment, and this will be a housing option for that. The other aspect is I know that there's been a lot of conversation lately about whether or not there has been too much multifamily approved, and we did reach the conclusion that currently we have met our demand for a while. However, we also considered the fact that there are areas of the community that probably could support some multifamily, given the particulars. The fact that this area is close to the industrial, the growing industrial sector to the west, and the fact that there is not any multifamily in this vicinity does present an opportunity for a multifamily product to add to the housing variety. Another criteria is the adequacy of the plan with respect to land use. As I mentioned on the previous slide, we do want to look at the compatibility between the multifamily proposed within the PAD and the single-family development on the north side of Early. So firstly, I want to mention that Early is designated as a minor arterial road. Only a half-street is there right now. But when Piratly Point were to be approved and the sites just immediately to the south side of Early go to develop, they would be required to dedicate additional right-of-way so that the total right-of-way width from the south right-of-way boundary to the north right-of-way boundary will result in 110 feet. I would say compare that to Cottonwood Lane. You have two lanes in each direction, a raised median, bike lane, sidewalk, et cetera. And so arterial roads do serve as a good separation of uses, and it also is well-placed from a traffic management standpoint because arterial roads do have a higher capacity for travel. The PAD does propose a minimum of a 30-foot setback for buildings from the front property line, both along Early as well as from Pierrot. And actually, along Pierrot, it's greater, it's at 35 feet. The reason why it's a greater setback along Pierrot is because you have industrial use, which is less of a compatible factor when considering that some of the adjacent properties on the east side of Pierrot are also single-family residential. So there is a slightly greater setback proposed, but Pierrot is also a wider right-of-way. It is ultimately going to be 140 feet wide, so it, by its very nature, does provide some additional separation coupled with a slightly greater setback. And then as far as the maximum heights proposed for the areas, the medium-density would have a maximum height of 30 feet. The high-density area would be 35 feet. The industrial area would be a height of 45, and then the commercial area's maximum height is 30. I should mention that, you know, there is a lot of sensitivity particularly not only for the urban ranch zone properties on the north side of Early that sit to the northwest, but on the, you know, towards the eastern side of this area on the north is the Tuscany subdivision. So one of the things that we looked at is the Tuscany perimeter wall from the right-of-way is 30 feet. So they themselves have a 30-foot setback from where their rear property line sits and where their right-of-way starts. And in the Tuscany development, along that southern boundary, they're all single-story homes. So the reason why that's somewhat of an advantage is the views of the single-family homes to what they're seeing on the other side of the wall is not as impacted because they're not necessarily now looking out their second-story window seeing development. Their point of view is a little bit more minimized due to the single-story nature. Regarding the public notification, we followed that which is required by code, and we did receive a phone call the evening before Planning Commission, and I believe the person who phoned that on January 3rd did attend and speak at the January 4th Planning Commission meeting. There were several residents who did provide comments, and that's been reflected in the minutes. Basically, the contention was is they felt that Early will be too busy of a road. I think they see the fact that east of Pierrot, it's been closed for a while, it's under construction due to the improvements associated with Carlton Commons, Early's being widened in that area, and there's some utilities being ran. And so I think they were coming from the perspective of, you know, if development happens right now and that section of Early's still closed, it is really going to be congested. But I think this is a situation where, right now, the applicant's asking for the zoning, and it wouldn't be until the time of the major site plan when we would look at traffic impact analysis to see exactly what would have to be mitigated from a traffic and utility standpoint. And then also, there was a comment shared that there really was a preference to see single-family homes or for-sale dwelling units in that area. And truly, that would be the most compatible because it would be like-for-like. You have single-family lots on the north side of Early, so sure, single-family lots on the south side of Early would truly be the most compatible. However, immediately south of that area would be industrial. So there is a purpose to have some transition from industrial to multifamily, which is a little bit more tolerant to industrial uses. But the biggest reason is this Piratly Point area does not have certificates of assured water supply, and that would be needed if a single-family residential subdivision was proposed involving more than five lots. So from a residential standpoint, really the only type of residential that would be allowed there is a rental-type product or some sort of subdivision that doesn't result in more than five splits. So the first recommendation, I understand you will have to probably vote and discuss them separately, but this presentation goes through both of them, is regarding the minor amendment to the general plan. At a vote of six, zero, Planning Commission did move to forward that the city council forward a recommendation of approval for the minor general plan amendment to place this area into the phase one growth area. And then the second, which is the second agenda item pertaining to roping, or Piratly Point, there's a typo there, sorry, the Piratly Point PAD, is on a vote of five to one, they moved to forward to City Council a recommendation of approval of the zone change from urban ranch to Piratly Point. However, subject to one condition, which is our standard condition requiring right-of-way dedication for Pierrot or Early if that is needed ahead of development, which is when we would normally be able to secure the right-of-way dedication. And that concludes my presentation.
Go ahead, Bob.
James, I'm going to ask a question first for an explanation, but isn't there a rule, a requirement, a law about when a property is annexed that the county zoning will follow it as to something that's as close as possible? And does that guide or prohibit our ability to zone it at the same time that we're annexing it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, so technically, right now, the property is zoned urban ranch. It's the most similar to the county's general rural zone. Should you decide to deny the Piratly Point PAD request this evening, the property would stay urban ranch, which is, like I say, the most similar to what it was in the county general rural. And there is no time limit on it, that within the same meeting, that initial zoning that was just approved moments ago with the annexation can be changed to something more intense. There isn't a wait period, so to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you. Lisa?
So there's a little more flexibility.
Right.
Keeping it urban ranch. Can you go to the slide that breaks out how many times it's divided? I think it's the next one, maybe? There you go. So if, you know, we approve the PAD and these designations are there, is there, you know, I'm listening to what our speaker asked, you know, as far as, you know, once we approve something, it's set at that, and we, you know, once it goes to major site plan, then we can do some of the other studies. But if we approve the PAD, is there flexibility with those designations and those sites? Or are those, these are the actual?
Fixed.
Yeah, are they fixed? That these, you know, sites are broken down into these for lots, I should say, right?
I believe Paul's going to answer your question. Yes.
So a couple of things regarding that question. First off, at the medium-density area, that would allow residential development up to 12 du's per acre. But that's, 12 du's is the maximum. The kind of developments you might see in medium-density, almost all our build-to-rent are in that category. Those, of course, are some single-family, some duplexes, some triplexes. We have other small, medium-density developments that have duplexes and triplexes as well. But again, that's the maximum density, and we do have to have a finding of use-to-use compatibility when we consider the major site plan. So when we saw a major site plan for that, it doesn't mean that the Planning Commission would have to grant the maximum density. They could require some lower density within that range, right, to be compatible with the adjacent land uses. So, and then, of course, high density is the same thing, and that's 20 du's per acre maximum. Those actual densities are determined at the time of major site plan with a further analysis of use-to-use compatibility with what's around it.
Okay.
So it's not done?
So there will be public hearings for people to come give input and everything, so that's the maximum. You know, of course, you like the idea of mixed use. We talk about this all the time, but, you know, you want to look at compatibility in the neighbors and, you know, and I'm glad, James, you talked about the discussions on apartments and our inventory and, you know, our product mix and where we're going. We have this study, but have we made any, you know, vision, you know, changes on where we are? But I understand the need in this area, but I, you know, you just like a little bit of flexibility and the community input when it gets closer to development here.
Matt?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge with this is the lack of the cause, right? So that's what's driving a lot of this. And as we've seen with a lot of our major site plans lately, how it's scaled back for setbacks, which is still going to be talked about, right, and as well as, you know, maybe the lower story, the lower-height buildings.
Single-story.
Single-story raising into two or, I guess, 30 foot, three-story technically?
I think that you theoretically could probably fit three stories and 30 feet, but that, it would be really tight.
Okay, so probably more like two-story.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's something that would be done at the site plan so everyone understands that because they're not making the decision on what it's going to look like on the site. But again, that's kind of the only options they have right now because they've divided it four times, so I guess they could have one more.
Right.
Divide the light industrial and happen, still be okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. James, can you explain if it was voted to go to phase one but not voted to go to the R3? What would be the offshoot of that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, there really would be no downside. The property, regardless of what's proposed there, really does, in my opinion, belong in phase one. You don't have to do a minor general plan amendment to phase one only if there's another request coinciding with it. I think it's appropriate, especially since you just adopted the infrastructure and services plan acknowledging that this area is or can feasibly be served by services and infrastructure. It's kind of, you know, lends itself to that phase one.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the first part's phase one, the second part is a PAD, right?
Right.
So it's not necessarily a R3, it's a PAD.
R3's on the.
Right, is up here on the right. Okay. So, anyway, and I think to Matt's point, is that this isn't a final, I mean, there's still.
A lot of public hearings.
A lot of public hearing, a lot of development plans still to be done. And there is, I mean, because all along Jimmy Kerr, that's a mishmash of all kinds of light industrial that's along Jimmy Kerr, and to expect single-family to go back up, backing up to that is probably not realistic. So what's the best use for this land? What's, you know, what's best use for, and for the community, but also realizing that Early Road is a major feeder, that goes all the way over to Mission Royale and then obviously connects to Jimmy Kerr. And so it's going to be a pretty wide street, right? What did you say, 130 feet?
110.
110, 110 feet wide. So basically five lanes, right? So it's a five-lane road. So it's, there's going to be some separation between that southern piece and the homes on the north.
And James, was there any discussion on just keeping it medium-density instead of the two separate high and medium?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fitzgibbon, that's a fantastic question because technically, because of the neighborhoods' general plan category, a medium-density residential site is capped at 25 acres. So there would technically be a way that they could do that. They could request multiple 25-acre maximum medium-density sites. However, it would have to propose, it would have to really get into the weeds and propose different products. So it would have to be very specific that one medium-density area is for built-to-rent and another one would be for maybe rented inline rentable townhome-type product. It would have to really describe and define that, the specific product, in order for us to consider them separate sites.
Anybody else? All right. It's a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor. There's two items here in question, is L two and L three. Is there anybody here who would like to speak?
That's a two L two public hearings.
Yeah, it's separate, two separate public hearings.
And just from a technical perspective, we will need to open the public hearing for L two, and then you'll need to vote on that before you hold the public hearing on L three.
All right, thank you. So L two.
So, L2 is the adoption of moving it from Phase Two to Phase One. Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak to that?
That's you.
Public hearing, L2. All right. Seeing none, then I'm gonna close that public hearing and then call for a resolution number. Gloria?
Resolution number 5273.27. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2030 as adopted by Resolution Number 5273, by changing the area from Phase Two to Phase One for a solid...
Approximately 108.52 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of Early Road and Pirt Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution Number 5273.27 as presented.
Second. All right, I got a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's move to item L3, which we just heard about also. And I will open the public hearing for L3, which is the change, changing it to a PAD, the zoning to a PAD.
I need to do my address and all that stuff again. Doesn't matter. Tina Cramp, 15188 West Early Road, Casa Grande. So, thanks for the information. I think it, it did help a lot, and I did speak too soon, sorry. I'm still in the same mindset as what I talked about first. However, I do agree with two things. One is jumping the gun on doing the PAD right now and the way that it was presented, when we don't even know if that is what, yes, it does work for that. But my concern is that we're gonna approve, you are gonna approve, not we, but you guys are gonna approve the PAD tonight as it's presented with the existing high-density, medium-density, and all of that in place. And then, when we do get an end user for it and they do come in, then it's gonna be an uphill fight trying to get adjustment or trying to get some figuring on use of that property. I understand the medium-density, I understand the 25. I do believe, I would hope that, and you could confirm if I'm incorrect, that if it come to that, the city council would have the authority to make a decision on changing the amount of acreage that can be used in a high-density and a medium-density area, I would hope. But I still stand behind that. I think that, I agree that you're, you know, you're trying to get that. I'm not sure how many miles. I'm really bad on directions. But the new apartment complex that's going in on Trickle and, at the corner of Trickle and Jimmy Kerr, like a nine iron probably for Gary, but probably not even a driver for me. It's gonna take two of that. But there's apartments going in right over there. I don't know if that's a half-mile, if that's a half-mile away, I'm not sure. But there's a lot of apartments going in right there, close to us. So, saying that there's nothing around the area, not sure about that. So, anyways, I'm gonna stand behind that. I really would like you to consider the use of that in this PAD as presented, maybe a make an amendment to the PAD, or maybe hold off on approving it until we can get some more information on an end user, or maybe some mixed use of the property of the high-density. Those are three-story, 24 units per acre. That's a lot across the street. And then you're gonna have next to it, you're gonna have up to 12 right next to it. That's a lot right across the street. And that's light industrial. It's not industrial. I'm being told it's light industrial. So, it's not like manufacturing. It's not like big industrial where you're gonna have people in there that's gonna wanna, you know, do that. If it's similar to what's on Jimmy Kerr now, I mean, you're gonna have some uses that are gonna be mixed that you might not... I love the idea of it. The concept is amazing in planning. I love those concepts and things that are in planning, how we, you know, try to plan out that stuff. I just don't, I still just don't believe that we need to, at this point and at this juncture, just make that approval right across the board tonight on approving that PAD as it's presented with that type of use. So, thank you very much for listening again.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this matter?
Evening, Mayor McFarland. Members of the council, my name is Greg Davis. I'm actually the advocate on the project, a land planner, and been working on this site for over a year now. So, I, I thought I would be able to give a presentation a little earlier, might have answered a few of the questions you have. But Jim did such a good job, comprehensive. Most of my presentation has already been spoken of, so I'll try to save you from regurgitating that information. But I do think a little discussion about kind of what our vision was and some of the updates about the project be helpful in, in your consideration of my request. So, do I need to turn it on, or is it...
It's not up.
Yeah, I don't see it. I'm pressing the button. It's gonna be a really, really short presentation. So, all right. Thank you. So, you know, at the P&amp;Z meeting, a couple of topics came up that we didn't discuss. And so, that's kind of the purpose of what this presentation is. Not a lot of the, the details of the project. It's more of the philosophical origins of it and some of the things we've done to address it since that point. But the, the basis of the project is we're really trying to create that live-work-play experience. And as a land planner, it's very exciting to be able to do that. Very few of my clients have that kind of vision. And so, when able, we're able to put that together on any piece of property is always a good thing, in my opinion. So, let's see if I can go through here. So, just a couple of points I wanna make about the project. When we talk about the question of, you know, how much is too much multifamily in the city is, you know, that's a very philosophical question. And I think you need to really break it down and look at each individual site to see if it's appropriate, 'cause you may have too much of any land use, but if it's not distributed correctly, it doesn't serve the interests of the town. And so, this project, although the focus is on multifamily, it's actually a small portion of the project. The, the majority of the project is for industrial use. We had the general plan amended, amended last fall. So, where you see the light industrial up there does match the general plan as it's approved today. So, we have about 55 acres of that industrial development, about eight to nine acres of the commercial, and then we have the two multifamily residential parcels. We talked about the holistic design, and that's what this really is. It, it isn't meant for each of these components to build, be built and live separately. They are dependent on each other. They are symbiotic in nature. We don't think that the project will be successful if we're missing a component of it. And that's why we've kind of come in with the PAD overlay instead of each individual land use, which you, you might be used to seeing. And again, it promotes the live-work-play ethos of the, of the general plan. Now, when we were working with staff and we asked the question of, about all the recent approvals of multifamily, we kind of looked at, well, what's been approved in this area? And there's been a couple multifamily projects that have been approved that's been discussed tonight. But there's really a dearth of multifamily options in this southeast area of the city. It's really kind of surprising because there's so much economic potential in this area. It's one of your growth areas that you're gonna see a lot of employment uses. And one of the key components for, you know, employment uses is the demand for workforce-type housing and housing options. Most employers are looking for locations that offer that type of diverse housing, whether it's rental, for sale, whatever it may be. And so, although the city may have too much from a report standpoint or statistics standpoint, we think this area does warrant additional multifamily, which is why it's part of our proposal. Now, when we look at the individual parcel, you can see there that we have most of the site being industrial or commerce and business on the general plan. And there is a lack of water certificate here, which I understand is why a lot of the other property owners in the city have went to a multifamily designation. You know, that's just not the case for this site. This site does not make a good single-family site because it is immediately adjacent to those industrial uses. And light industrial does allow some manufacturing, some outdoor storage, and other uses that could potentially be a compatibility issue specifically with single-family detached homes. So, when we talk about someone investing several hundred thousand dollars, their life savings, in a property, they have a much higher vested interest. And so, their concerns about noise and light and air quality create conflict, and they create complaints. And that can be really disruptive to the industrial users as well as to the city who has to feel those complaints. So, we think that regardless of the water certificate issue, this area really does need to be more of a transitional land use, and that's why we're proposing multifamily. When we look at the individual site itself, as a planner, we always look at what's good land use transitioning. You know, we, we can't have every use be the same. There needs to be graduation in intensities as we look through a site. So, we start with the context of the property. And we look at the general plan and we see, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of industrial south of Jimmy Kerr. Obviously, that's still in the county, and it may be a while for that to come in. But that is the future, you know, vision for the, the city. As you cross Jimmy Kerr, let's see here, we have the Union Pacific Railroad, which is also an intense use. And then we transition into the commerce and business, which our site is a part of. But you can see there, it's a pretty big swath, probably 120 acres of so. And so, there needs to be a transition between that industrial and especially the large-lot single-family. And that's why we've positioned the multifamily along our north boundary to kind of serve as that transitional land use. But we're also transitioning from east to west, specifically because of that large-lot industrial along our northwest boundary. We have our commercial on the hard corner. That's why we placed the higher, higher-density residential adjacent to that. And then we have our lower-density, four to 12 units per acre, the lowest multifamily designation, which I think equates to R2. That's correct, Jim? Okay. So, we placed that R2 across the street from the large-lot county residence to the north specifically for that reason, so that we can transition both from a north-south and from an east-west standpoint. And how that actually looks on the ground, which is probably pertinent to those folks as far as what they're gonna see there, we kind of created a couple of slides just to illustrate how that setback works. So, Early Road is our north boundary. Jim identified it's gonna be 110-foot right away. So, roads make excellent boundaries. They're basically a large setback, help create that horizontal separation. As we move into the site, we're going to have the code-required 30-foot setback, which is usually landscaping, can include some fencing, driveways, drive-aisles, et cetera. But for the most part, it's an extension of that horizontal separation. It also introduces some screening elements because you get trees and bushes, et cetera. Now, because neighbors did attend the P&amp;Z meeting and made us aware that they were concerned about that transition, we are proposing to extend that an additional 20 feet, so we'd have a total of 50 feet of that building setback to help soften that transition between those properties. We think that is appropriate. They have large yards on their side, so we think if we have a large 50-foot yard on our side, it'll help make that transition much more manageable and, and compatible with them. The other element about building height, we also see the need to limit the building height. We, we do have a letter of intent on the medium-density parcel, but we don't on the higher-density parcel yet. So, what we're proposing is that we would limit the height on the first 50 feet beyond that additional 50-foot setback. So, the first 100 feet would be limited to that 30-foot. I put 28, I thought that was the limit, but 30-foot, whatever the code requires, so that we wouldn't have those three-story elements that close to the street, which we think would help soften that transition to their property as well. So, you know, just summing all that up, from their future south property line to where we're, our first building would be, would be a total of 160 feet, which is a significant setback. And then an additional 50 feet, so 210, before you'd have any buildings above 30 feet. The, the single-family code allows 30 feet, so we're matching that for the, you know, that first 100 feet within our, our property, which we think is a fair, you know, compromise. So, just in summary, you know, we've designed this project really not only meet, but exceed a lot of the goals and policies of the general plan. We're really trying to promote a lot of the employment here. We actually have a letter of intent on the industrial, part of the industrial property as well. So, we're trying to promote a project that does live up to that live-work-and-play ethos in there, as well as meet some of the other general plan requirements, such as providing a diversity of housing, which the city has a diversity of housing, but there's not a lot of diversity in this area of town, which I think is really vital for you guys to continue to attract employers to this area. We're doing all this, you know, trying to follow sound planning principles. You know, we're providing the interconnectivity of our own property. We're providing that transition of land uses to the neighbors to the north. And we're applying appropriate buffering, which goes beyond the code to help make those mitigations efforts, you know, reasonable for them. So, with all that, support of staff and support of P&amp;Z, we hope you have, we have your support here tonight. So, I'll conclude the presentation and be available for any questions.
Matt, Mr. Lavender?
Can you go back to the, where you have the medium and high-density side by side?
Do you want to further back the whole plan or this one?
Is there one that shows the boxes a little bit more detail?
That's the other one.
So, I guess my question is, if the medium-density, could it be more rectangular-shaped rather than square-shaped and run all the way along Early Road? And why didn't you consider that as a buffer as well? You understand my question?
I think so. I, I'll try to answer that and let me know if I answered it correctly. So, I think when we're looking at land uses, we knew we had a, a limit of 25 acres for the medium-density and 20 acres for the higher-density. And so, to put those in as best of developable shapes as possible to provide that transition is really what we ended up in. We knew we wanted to put the medium-density on the far west side. We knew we wanted the commercial corner, and the high-density just kind of filled the gap. So, if we put the medium-density more horizontally, I don't know where the higher-density would go. Would that go along Pirt?
To the south of the medium.
Gotcha. So, yeah, I think then, at that point, you're just getting into shapes that don't really work from a development standpoint. You know, each use needs to have its own window for access, et cetera. So, I, we didn't look at that, but just based upon what you're saying, I'm not sure that it would work from a viability standpoint. The other element is we're trying to preserve as large of a regular shape as we can for the industrial, because they take large shapes. And so, if we start cutting that down further and further, we're gonna have harder time filling that space up, which really is the, the importance of this project.
Any other comments?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Matt.
On the medium-density, where you, I'm just gonna go forward to where you did the additional buffer.
Keep going.
But then you said...
One more.
The building height, the max in the medium is 30 feet, is that correct? And the max in the high is 35? But here, you're saying 28, and you said that you meant 30, right? I mean...
Yeah, that's, if that's what the zoning...
It doesn't make too much difference.
No.
But to me, you're not, I would think maybe if you're doing different stories, you would do, you know, like 10-foot or 15-foot, like single-story, and then go to the multi-story farther, farther south.
Sure. And that, and that is something we considered, but, you know, because we, you know, this really only impacts the, the higher-density because that allows 35 feet. But we looked at what would be better for the developer, to have a, a greater setback and then go vertical, or have buildings closer to the street. We figured the neighbors would prefer buildings further back from them regardless of the height. And we also wanted to be fair to us, because the zoning districts to the north allow 30-foot height. And so, we're just trying to match that. We think that's fair, even if they're not built at that. You know, it's an equivalency that we think is appropriate.
But you are restricting on the height.
Correct, yeah. We're limiting, so we're limiting that 30-foot height to that first 100 feet into the property to help create that. And chances are, I mean, there's a good likelihood that neither one of these, we will be built above 30 feet. We don't know that at this point. But we're trying to put that protection in place so everyone can rely on that, so we're not having to come back to you and ask for amendments and have this battle down the road.
You always put less.
Yeah. And then, so people know, I mean, again, you have to go to a major site plan to get all the specifics and the heights and the layout.
And this distance actually is 210 now, right?
For the, yeah, for the...
Yeah, there you go.
For the, for the height restriction. That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's good for our, you know, ultimate users too, so that this is already codified.
That's a lot.
You know, they're not gonna be coming and asking for amendments, et cetera, because this has already been decided. And, and that should make everyone's job easier when you have to see this again at the major site plan level.
Well, and I appreciate you listening to what the, the neighbors are saying too, 'cause I, 'cause it's gonna happen later, you know, in the major site plan. So, I think it's important to hear some of those concerns now. But, you know, I, I know somewhere in here, you talked about affordable housing and, you know, as there's an increase in the inventory that it'll be affordable, but that's not necessarily the case, 'cause it's, apartments are expensive, really. But, but are, are either of these, you said you had a letter of intent on the medium-density. Are they, you know, gonna look for, you know, true affordable housing, the low-income housing tax credits, or anything to, to be affordable housing? to be affordable housing?
The affordable housing component and workforce housing, I think, is going to be important in this area, but in order for that to really be effective, you need the higher density, and that's why the high-density from 12 to 24 is where you're going to see that happen. So the letter of intent we have for the medium-density parcel, it's not going to, it's going to be market rate, because if you're going to try to achieve that goal, you would need to get as many units as possible, so it works better in the HDR category.
Right, okay.
And James, you have these things that he just brought up, on record in your notes?
No, so if those are to be new standards, then they would have to be introduced as additional conditions of record to modify the PAD guide to reflect these...
Okay, and can we do that, can we do that here?
That could be a motion, and that could be added, yes.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And I have not closed the public hearing, so it's still open, so if there's someone here that'd like to speak.
Gloria Johnson, story 1245 East Lowell Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona. This is new to me, and I heard what Bob and Lisa said, and I tend to agree that until this is absolutely firmed up, that maybe you shouldn't jump into this right away. I heard high-density and I went in panic mode. There's some really nice homes out there, Tuscany, and even the rent, I always say rent-to-own, but rent-to-rent, homes out there are a little upscale, and I think by going right into something like this, especially with the homes that are already there on Early Road, some of them are really nice. I think that you should keep the zoning neutral until someone really has a plan, so that people can actually visualize what's going to happen. Anytime you throw high-density out, that's a scary thought. We have a lot of high-density around this town. I consider Treacle Road becoming a tunnel anymore because of all the apartments, but I think it would be nice to the residents out there and the new builds that are going in, that maybe it should be considered at the time there's a plan, instead of just generalizing and changing everything. Unless I didn't understand it, but it sounds like there's nothing proposed, but I did hear three-story apartments mentioned, of course, that got my attention, but I think the houses out there are really, they're really pretty upscale. So, I would, I would ask that you consider not changing zoning immediately. It's fun that we're growing, but let's grow sensibly. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Just some comments, I know the applicant has, this is a plan, this is how applications come forward, in terms of developing this PAD, and then the applicant can go find buyers for their property, you know, this is, there's property rights here, and there is some right of ownership to develop their property. And I think they're trying to be very respectful of their neighbors, and especially by increasing this setback, and obviously they'll be landscaping, and they'll be, I'm sure, some nice entrances, all that can be still done in the design phase, this is not final, final, but for a developer to go sell their property and market their property, they have to go through this process. And unless they go through this process, and if we don't approve this, and then say, leave it alone, then he's got to come back, and that time is money for somebody trying to develop their property. In fact, the state legislature is attacking municipalities because we're dragging people through the mud, and we are causing a lot of expense for developers and builders to come in, and I want to protect our city as much as possible. But the more we do this, the more we're put under the microscope with the legislature. And unless I get more help up at the legislature and get some folks helping me to tell our representatives to not vote for some of these crazy bills, which right now I think I feel like I'm the only one doing it, then they're going to pass these bills, and then we'll have no public process, we'll have no public input, and there'll be no zoning, and that's where we're headed. So if we want to be responsible, this to me looks responsible. It's a responsible use of a very large piece of land, and they're trying to be thoughtful, and again, we'll have an opportunity to have more thought put into this and more design comments and input from public, as long as these bills don't get passed in the legislature. I'm sorry I keep bringing that up, but it's a sore point for me. And, you know, so I think we need to give the landowner an opportunity to move forward with his property. And I think this is very responsible, and he's, again, added these points. Now, these land use transitions, is this the piece that we're talking about that you had? So, if we are to move forward, I'd recommend some amendment to this ordinance as it's stated. How would we do that?
When we make the motion, we would add an amendment.
Okay.
To add conditions, right? James? There'd be additional conditions on the PAD, I guess Brett would be the better one to ask.
Yeah, I think to the extent that we wanted to add the conditions that the applicant spoke about today, I think you'd be adding two conditions, as I see it. Condition number two, because there's one condition already in the ordinance, which deals with our right-of-way, I would be add condition number two, to say that the PAD guide shall be revised, to note that the minimum setback for medium-density and high-density areas identified in the PAD shall be at least 50 feet from the north property line. And condition three would be the PAD guide shall be revised, to note that no buildings exceeding 28 feet in height shall be built closer than 100 feet to the north property line in the areas identified as medium-density or high-density in the PAD.
Matt?
And to that point, it sounds like the applicant has already a letter of intent on this, it's not just zoning to zone it, right? There's somebody already interested in the parcel?
Correct, there's actually two, one for the medium-density and one for the industrial. And to the mayor's point, you know, we can't get any further in the process until the least the base zoning is in place, which is what we're asking for, so thank you.
All right, then, I'll entertain the ordinance, please Gloria.
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, I did.
You did.
Yeah.
I was trying to write things down.
And Mayor, I just wanted to comment, you know, on what you mentioned, we have to remember, something's going to go here, you know, and so, you know, being responsible and listening to the property owners and having these, you know...
Conversations.
Yeah, conversations is really important, so, you know, it is responsible, the fact that, you know, it's mixed-use, we have, you know, this is, these are things that we've promoted and have wanted, but we want to listen to the homeowners that are near, but I do want to come back to apartments, and I know the multifamily, I know, you know, but, you know, there is a need for them, you know, we know that we, you know, are, we have a lot of product, you know, here in our community, but, you know, and I hope the staff see, I know you see it, because you brought it up, you know, the conversations that we've been having, as far as, we can't continue to just keep approving these, but because of the location, because of the responsible, you know, what they're proposing here makes me a little bit more comfortable, but I am, and having that, those, you know, open for public comment in the future with the major site plan phase. So, I know, it's tough, but I think you're right, Mayor, we don't know if this is even going to be taken away from us, you know, for us to...
Even have the ability to do anything.
Be involved in this process.
Right, right. Okay, so how do we want to, we'll do the ordinance number, and then we'll add to the statement on here. Okay, go ahead Gloria, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 1178.446, and ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to planned area development on property located generally at the southwest corner of Yearly Road, Empir Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.446 with the amendment that the setback be moved an additional 50 feet for the medium and high-density parcels in this PAD.
Wasn't there another?
And the proposed additional restriction of the building height.
And the proposed additional building height setback, 20 feet for 50-foot total, that's what I just said.
28 feet.
20.
28 feet.
Yes.
We'll make sure it says what it says on here.
Yeah. That, and then, oh, the additional restricted height of 28 feet. Is that what we had said, Brett? What you had helped me craft?
So what I'm understanding the motion to be, is that we're going to approve, the motion is to approve ordinance number 1178.446.
With additional conditions.
As originally presented with the addition of condition number two, to read the PAD guide shall be revised, to note that the minimum setback for medium-density and high-density areas identified in the PAD shall be at least 50 feet from the north property line, and adding condition number three, to read the PAD guide shall be revised, to note that no buildings exceeding 28 feet in height shall be built closer than 100 feet to the north property line in the areas identified as medium-density or high-density in the PAD.
That's exactly what I meant to say.
Exactly what Matt said.
Could it be my right?
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. Okay, so we have L4.
Another public hearing.
Another public hearing, this is for resolution 5273.26. James, are you doing this one too?
I am.
All right.
So this is another minor general plan amendment and another zone change, so it's similar applications to the last presentation, however, it's regarding a much smaller acreage and a different area of town. So this project is known as Tyler Acres, and it refers to six acres of land located in the far southern end of the community near Casa Grande Mountain. Erika Road is the city limits, and this sits just on the, just on the north side of the city limits, and it's, this property sits near Lamb Road, which is also the city-county boundary. And there's two requests in front of you this evening, the first is a minor general plan amendment to place this six-acre site into Phase 1, and that's actually the specific agenda item, but like with the last one, I'd like to combine the two agenda items to also talk about the zone change from urban ranch to R1.
To L4 and L5.
Correct, thank you. I thought that, but I was too tired to remember that. So, the six acres of land is identified in blue on the screen, it's currently comprised of three two-acre parcels, and the property is zoned urban ranch. Urban ranch allows a minimum of 1.25-acre lot sizes with 100-foot minimum lot widths. Some of the allowed uses in the urban ranch include one single-family home per lot, or with the approval of a conditional use permit, you can have a manufactured home. Urban ranch also allows the keeping of horses, or you could also develop the site for agricultural or associated agricultural operations. Under the urban ranch zone, because the minimum lot size is an acre and a quarter, technically the three two-acre lots could be reparsled to be four one-and-a-quarter-acre lots within that six-acre area. The applicant, however, is requesting a zone change to R1 to allow six one-acre lots. In the R1 zone, ordinarily, the minimum lot size is much smaller than one acre, however, in this case, there is a recommended condition of record to keep it at one acre minimum. Not only is that a recommended condition of record, but even without the condition, they would be limited to one acre minimum lot sizes, because there isn't sewer in this area, and in order to be, in order to develop a site with septic, we have a city code that requires the minimum lot size of an acre. And with the R1 zone, you would not be able to propose a manufactured home under the current city code, you wouldn't be able to keep horses, but you are limited to one single-family home per lot. So there are, the first request is the minor general plan amendment to place this six-acre area into Phase 1. Now, as you notice, it would be an island of Phase 1, that's okay, the applicant has to demonstrate why or how is, how this property is able to be served or treated as a Phase 1 property, and they have demonstrated it by the nature of the fact that they would be on septic, so it doesn't rely on city sewer. There is water lines in Erika, so they are served by water and power, and the city trash service already serves this area, so to serve two more homes where they currently could reparse it to have four lots, but in order to create six, it would be trash service for two more homes, it really does, it is seen as very little impact to go to Phase 1. However, when this item, when the zone change in the minor general plan amendment came in front of Planning Commission on January 4th, on a vote of 4-2, Planning Commission moved to deny both the minor general plan amendment and the zone change. There were neighboring residents who were in attendance, who had expressed concerns about the fact that surrounding properties are larger, and these one-acre lots would be out of place. And then there was also concern that these additional lots would result in extra traffic. Traffic is already a concern, as there is very limited ingress and egress into the area. I'll show a larger map towards the end, but really, the only way in and out of this area is through Erika Road over to Sunland Gin, and so it is, it is pretty tight there in terms of options. There were concerns about water pressure and drainage, and then the commissioners themselves, while they were discussing whether or not to support these two requests, and the minutes reflect this, but they had expressed concerns about the appropriateness of taking three existing parcels and reparsaling them in a way that would result in six parcels, they looked at that as kind of skirting the limit on the certificates of assured water supply, because as I mentioned in the last presentation, you're limited to a total of five parcels. However, this is a situation where there are three existing parcels, and the proposal would be basically to take each one of the three and create two. So they're not creating five parcels out of each parcel, they're creating two parcels out of each parcel, so, you know, city staff looked at it as well within the limitations that have been put upon us by Arizona Department of Water Resources, and it's a way to add some additional lots because of our restriction with a limitation of five parcel splits, this is a way to be able to ensure more single-family homes be constructed. So, the, based on the denial, the applicant did submit a request to be heard by city council, there is a city code request... There is a city code requirement that should there be a denial of a zone change, the applicant does have to express in writing in order for council to hear the request. It was advertised, but technically, in order for us to be here this evening, the applicant did have to come forward and specifically request council's consideration. And I do want to talk about what the applicant did indicate in terms of the reason why council should support the zone change. So firstly, as I mentioned, the area to the south of Erika and to the east of Lamb are in Pinnell County, and their zoning is such where those lots can be a minimum of one acre. So although it's true there are parcels to the north of the Tyler area that are currently larger, the properties to the south of Erika and to the east of Lamb are allowed to be as small as one acre. The area within the Urban Ranch area can be as small as an acre and a quarter. So we're, yes, they are smaller, but we're talking by a quarter acre in size. And also, even though there are larger parcels to the north and east, they certainly could at some point in the future do a reparsaling to reduce those parcel sizes down to an acre and a quarter. They would be allowed to do that so long as they're not taking their existing parcel and creating more than five out of it. And then I should also point out that immediately west of the Tyler site is the Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Planned Area Development, which has a current entitlement of a medium-density residential use of 12 dwelling units per acre. So, you know, yes, the proposal to go to R1 to create minimum one-acre lots does create smaller lots, because currently the minimum lot size is an acre and a quarter. But another way to look at it, when you, when you look at a larger picture, you have a mixture of lot sizes. You have 12 DUs per acre to the west, you have one-acre lots to the south and to the east, and you have an acre and a quarter to the, to the north. So it is, it is a variety, and the one-acre limitation is, you know, it could be said that it is within reason. They are not proposing minimum 7,000 square-foot lots, it's still at an acre minimum. And the proposal would be to take each one of the three parcels and create two out of each of the three. What that would result in is a minimum of 100-foot wide lots, which is currently the minimum lot width allowed in the Urban Ranch. So even without a zone change, technically, you know, they could reparse it in some way where you would have a minimum lot width of 100, which would be the product of what you would get in the R1. And then this is a larger map that I referred to to show a couple of things. One, I think it is, it can be agreed that there is a lot of traffic being put onto Sunland Gin from technically one street. Now, what this map doesn't show is parallel to Erika to the south, there is a new road that goes to Sunland Gin, but neither road has a traffic signal. And as an avid user of Casa Grande Mountain Park, which just sits to the west, it is tough getting in and out of there, especially trying to make a left onto Sunland Gin if you're trying to go northbound. There is a lot of traffic, but the other purpose of this map is to show you a couple of things. One, the variety of different lot sizes in this area, especially if you look closer to Sunland Gin on the north side of Erika, they're, they're, it's all in the county, but they're, you know, probably 6,000 square-foot size lots. But the other thing to show you is, there's a lot of undeveloped lots. And so, you know, traffic is going to continue to increase here, and I think everyone can agree that traffic is a concern. I think that ultimately, the county's going to have to look at solutions, because where that intersection is, at Erika and Sunland Gin, is Pinnell County. And hopefully, the residents can work with the county to come up with continued solutions. But one of the reasons why, despite that, staff was recommending support of the zone change, is we're really just talking about two more lots. Because even though there's three existing parcels now, Mr. Tyler could go to the county and create a total of four parcels within those existing six acres, given that the minimum lot size is an acre and a quarter. And so this zone change would basically allow the ability to create a total of six lots where the zoning currently allows four. So we're talking about two more potential dwellings where four is currently allowed. I think in the grand scheme of things, two more rooftops amongst all the empty lots really wouldn't be a significant impact, albeit it is agreed that traffic is a growing concern there. When looking at the minor general plan amendment criteria, it has to be demonstrated how this area is suitable for Phase One. I did touch upon some of these already, but I do want to say that with regard to water, one of the concerns was about water pressure, and I think that that is a concern if there's already existing low water pressure in the area. Should there be homes proposed in the, in Tyler's six acres, whether we're talking about three homes, four homes, or six, they will have to tap into the water vein, and they'll have to work with Arizona Water Company on that, on what type of agreement is necessary. So as part of that agreement, Arizona Water Company should and would look at water pressure and ensuring that it is adequate to serve the homes proposed. Just like there's empty lots on the south side of Erika, when homes get proposed there, they will have to look at whatever is appropriate to maintain an acceptable water pressure. And then in looking at the zone change specifically, these are the three criteria that we look at when, when looking at traditional zone districts such as R1. And the staff report goes into each of these three more specifically. I do want to talk about the goals policies and other applicable elements in dealing with the city's general plan. So this area is actually within the neighborhoods category, which does allow a mixture of densities. You know, as you saw, you could have 12 DUs per acre as a medium-density residential product. But this, you know, this is still considered a fairly, you know, residential estate-sized lot, keeping it at a minimum of one acre. One of the action steps talked about requiring a physical separation, such as fences, berms, parks, or landscaped areas between residential and non-residential developments. And, and how this is addressed is we are recommending a conditional, or a condition of record, limiting the parcel size to one acre, just to ensure that compatibility. The reason why we're specifically recommending that condition is what we're saying is, even if sewer is in the area, we do recommend that that lot size is kept at one acre, that it, that it shouldn't be reduced any more than that. A rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. As I mentioned, generally, neighborhood supports development up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre, and that, that wouldn't be restricted to any sort of site size. This site would yield one dwelling unit per acre, which is well within the density allotment. And then the third criteria is that this zone change is necessary, or there's a community need. And so the city's analysis shows that there's at least 19,000 vacant, single-family lots with certificates of assured water supply. This property is not one of them. It does not have certificates of assured water supply. However, this is an opportunity to create more buildable lots for single-family homes, despite the fact that it does not have cause. With regard to the public notification, we notified the public, which is required by code. We had received some inquiries, as I have already mentioned, and I believe some people are in the audience to, to express their concerns. And then with regard to the recommendations, just a little history, and as I mentioned, staff did recommend to Planning Commission to move to forward to city council, a recommendation to approve the minor general plan amendment. However, they moved to forward to city council, a recommendation to deny the minor general plan amendment. And then same thing with the zone change, we, staff did recommend that Planning Commission move to forward to city council, a recommendation to approve the zone change with these conditions. One of them that I did not mention is that any future lot split, so when they go to, should this zone change be approved, and they go to reconfigure the parcels, it shall be reviewed and approved by the planning director for adequacy of access and utilities, just to ensure that some of those concerns are met. However, despite staff's recommendation, Planning Commission did forward to council a recommendation to deny. And as I mentioned, per 1768.520, council can only hear this except by written requests, which the applicant did provide written request. So should council end up reversing Planning Commission's decision and approve the zone change, staff would recommend or request that it be subject to the stated conditions of record. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, James. Questions for James?
I just have one. James, all those lots to the west that belong to the, that are in the county, do you know if they have assured water certificates, or do they not? Do you know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, I believe that the lots to the south and to the, on the east side of Lamb are known as precause, so it was subdivided and platted, and so all of those are buildable lots. They can build a house there, but there, there is not technically certificates of assured water supply, but the state will allow homes to be built there because it's already been subdivided into the.
It was probably subdivided before 1982, which was when the groundwater act was enacted, so.
Right.
They're all grandfathered in. We have several actually around Francisco Grande that are like that.
Matt?
And the ones to the west where it's the PAD?
Correct.
Is that, is that what you were asking about? Does it have cause there?
Because that's a.
Oh, to the, to the west?
Yeah, that's 12.
No.
DUs.
So there's a PAD sandwiched in between Casa Grande Mountain Park and Tyler property.
It's that way because it doesn't have cause there either.
It does not, no.
And this one is doing it because, is able to be done because you're technically dividing three lots one time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, depending on when those lots were plotted, if I was the landowner, I'd double-check the rules on subdividing. Because if it's considered one owner, maybe separate plats, but I'm not sure that that rule of five doesn't pertain. Have they double-checked that? Do you know?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do think that, that the owner should make sure they do their due diligence with regard to that, but the, the way we approached it is that a parcel cannot split within a 10-year period.
Right.
You know, so if they went and did their splitting, and then wanted to split again, they wouldn't be able to do that within a 10-year period if they're creating, you know, more than five parcels.
So these have been here for longer than 10 years?
But when we looked into it, the existing three parcels, as they sit, have sat that way for longer than 10 years.
Okay. I just want to make sure that checks it out, so. Go ahead, Bob.
Is this an annexation, too?
No. No, it's already in the city.
Oh, it's already in? Oh, okay. I thought you said something about a city island.
Oh, it's a city island of Phase One, or an island, an island of Phase One, surrounded by Phase Two.
It's in Phase Two now.
Okay.
To develop, to put in Phase One.
Okay, thank you.
You did mention police and fire. I'm just curious, is the expectation that if they build these homes, they're going to have police and fire out there, because they're the only reason we'd go out there?
It's in the city limits.
Mr. Mayor, there's already residences just to the north and to the east of this property that we're already providing city services to.
Oh, this up on the top here?
Yep, on the top, and then directly north. And then maybe, yeah, right there, too.
Okay.
Is there a house there? Uh-huh, I think there's a house on the corner.
Okay. Well, if we're already going there, then. Because didn't this whole Erika area come to us once and ask us to annex them all in so that they could get city services about five, six years ago?
They did, yes. We did look at annexing the property both to the east and south of here, but decided not to because the streets were not up to city standards, and there were drainage issues as well. So we did look at it, and the council direction at the time was that the city was not willing to annex unless the residents figured a way to improve their infrastructure up at least close to city standards.
Okay. But we're not, but we're not looking at that now because Erika serves it already, and it's county road, so, because it's already in the city.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah. Okay. Well, then, we're going to divide this up. L4 is the public hearing for resolution 5273.26, and this is to change the general plan from Phase Two to Phase One. So if there's anybody who would like to speak about this phasing, not the, not the zoning, if, 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 if there's anyone who would like to speak on that, on L4, then please, because I do have two requests to speak, but they're on L5, which is probably what you want to speak on. All right. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing on L4, and we'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Reso, excuse me, resolution number 5273.26, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the city of Casa Grande, excuse me, general plan 2030, as adopted by resolution number 5273, by changing the growth area from Phase Two to Phase One for approximately six acres of property generally located 600 feet west of Lamb Road on the north side of Erika Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5273.26 as presented.
You guys are falling asleep up here. All right, so I have a motion and a second on L4. Can I get a?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is L5. Again, any questions from council on it?
I had one more question.
Go ahead.
For James. Sorry, you said there could be four houses now, or there's three lots, right?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, there's currently three parcels, but they're each two acres. So of the, of the total of six acres that Mr. Tyler owns, he could technically do a parceling that ends up with four parcels within those six acres, because the current zoning allows an acre and a quarter.
Oh, for one, for one and a quarter acres?
Yeah.
Okay. And he wouldn't have to go, he wouldn't have to go through anything for that.
Right. He wouldn't have to do any kind of zone change.
He could just do it.
Right.
File them with the city.
Right. But, and we, and we would, depending on how it was being configured, he may have to, he may have to go through a formal plating process, but the point was, is under the current zoning, you could. zoning, you could have four dwelling units within that acreage.
Okay. I heard you say that and that's why, because of the lot size.
Right.
One and a quarter. And did you guys talk to him about that before?
There was some discussion because, you know, I guess the question is, is that if it's kept at Urban Ranch and if his, if his intent is to try to increase the sellability of the property, there is a way under the current zoning to get one more lot.
Okay.
Rather than going through a zone change process with, with the ability to get six lots where there's-
But then the Urban Ranch could have manufactured home.
With, with the approval of a conditional use permit.
Okay. Thanks.
So with this change, though, there is no manufactured home?
Correct.
Okay. Which seems to me would be a benefit to the neighbors, not having a manufactured home there. Okay. All right. So again, this is a public hearing. This is on the zoning change from Urban Ranch to R1. So I will open the floor. If there's anyone here who would like to address council on this issue. I do have, yeah, I do have speaker cards. Francis? Oh, you know what? I think I should take Bonnie first because Bonnie signed in first. So Bonnie, sorry, Francis, we'll get, we'll get you. Bonnie Vincent.
My name is Bonnie Vincent and I live at 2250 East Erika Road in Casa Grande. My property is just north of the Tyler property. And thank you, Mayor and councilpeople, for, members for listening to me. When we went to the zoning commission and they denied it, we were very pleased because we are worried about the traffic. At Sunland Gin in Erika Road, Erika is where all the Loves trucks are and trying to get out with the 18-wheelers and stuff has been really, really hard. Also, the water. The zoning commission brought up the certificate of water, and that's real important. There has been new housing at Erika in John Jacob Astor. They're putting in those computerized concrete homes. My water pressure has gone down tremendously. I get a trickle of water and putting houses beyond me, because my property is a flagpole and goes out to Erika, so I would be on the same line and I would have no water. And that's very difficult here. I'm also concerned about the environmental. We have washes that go through the Tyler property that causes problems. And we also have the foxes and the coyotes. But the reason we bought the land where we did is because we wanted elbow room. We didn't want people on top of us. And having, going from three to six might not seem a lot to you, but to us, there's that much noise, more noise, that much more traffic. And for services, I've lived there for three years and I've yet to see a police officer in the area ever patrolling. I see a sheriff every once in a while. And to get the, my neighbor had to get an EMT, and it took forever for the EMT to get there because of the traffic with the 18-wheelers. And we're just real concerned that it was denied, but now they want to approve it. We would like to have it still denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Francis?
Hi, I would like to address the mayor and the city council. Do I have three minutes? Okay, let me start my timer. I'm here to speak on behalf of Henry Tyler. I have known him 67 years. He is my brother. He purchased this land many, many years ago. As you can see, he is a self-made man, and there's no fear of what he's planning on doing with this property. I hear people complaining about the traffic. Loves, I love Loves. I stop at Loves every time I travel. But this existed before Henry Tyler. That sounds like to me, a lot of these complaints are not concerning about how he wants to improve his land. I look at him and he'll be 70 years old and he has waited a long time to be able to assess his land, build a home on it. We hear concerns about manufacturer homes. I'm not sure why that keep coming up, as if there's a problem if people do live in manufacturer homes, but that's not his intent. Far as traffic, that's an ADOT problem. There's no way he can go, his six houses will not solve the problem that's currently there. The water pressure is not Mr. Tyler. We're making Mr. Tyler bigger than life and that whatever he acquires here will be some impact on urban-
[coughs]
And I don't want to get emotional because I know with emotional, you can get a little bit tied up in your feelings, and this is not about feelings. But I hear where people want it denied, and I did pull the meetings and what was said last time, and all of this is hearsay. And to not approve him based on conditions of opinions, coyotes, I live near coyotes. Can we control the coyotes in Arizona? We're, he doesn't bring coyotes in. Sometime I think this is a fear factor. There have been some neighbors that have gotten together and who knows why, they have decided that Mr. Tyler, like I said, a self-made man that have paid for his land, should be getting this much attention that he can't put it into one six acres lot. Six more people, whatever, is not going to change that condition that he's trying to be denied on. So I thank you for your time. I look at a lot of serious faces, but however, I hope we can approve him and let him get on with his life. You know, he's not a big developer. I sat here and listened to a big developer. He's planning on doing numerous of things. This is just a simple man. So minus that two, zero. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Francis. Is there anyone else who is here, like to address the council?
Yes, my name is Henry Tyler, and I have some of the, what you were talking about water pressure. The houses were built there 30 years ago. So I called the water company and they said they don't have any problem with the water pressure, that if you having any problem, it should be a plumber issue. So that's the only thing I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Henry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just in support of Mr. Tyler's project-
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. My name is Martha Aragon and I'm from 1357 East Jarden Drive, Casa Grande, G Diamond. Just to point out, to bring to your attention that he, in his request letter, you find out in page 782 of the packet, he addressed the commission's concerns. They had two concerns, which had to do with the perceived, the splitting of the lots, you know. He addressed that. There's definitely, we did some research and, no, definitely not, you know, there's not five lots being split in here. He also submitted a response to his neighbors that you find out in page 783 of your packet. Again, just wanted to say that the guiding principles that he submitted in his application were reviewed by the, by the staff, you know, they were thoroughly answered, and they do, they do stand for the goals that the general plan, that the city's general plan. He is within his property rights to, you know, to divide the property. His land, that land has been there within the city limits for 30 years now, and he has owned, he has owned that land for just about that loan, you know, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address this issue? This is L5. All right. Seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing. I did have one letter that we received. It was in support Tyler's rezoning. Did you all get a copy of this? Yes, from Deb Martin?
Yes.
Okay. So make sure that Gloria gets a copy.
I have one.
Any other comments from council on this?
No.
Mayor, I think the only comment is your question on dividing the lots. Of course, that was a concern with the Planning Commission, so just wanted to confirm-
It sounds like they've answered that, though.
Yeah, it does sound like they've answered. But that was one of the concerns that I had when I read through it. So if it looks like that is legal and, you know.
Okay. No other comments or questions? All right. Then I'm going to call for a ordinance number, please Gloria, on L5.
Oh, my God. It's dying here. I got it. Ordinance number 1178.445. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to single-family residential on approximately six acres of property generally located 600 feet west of Lamb Road on the north side of Erika Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve amending zoning ordinance 1178 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. We'll move to L6. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 1178.447. Amending zoning ordinance, easy for me to say, number 1178.
This one might not have the intricacies that we've seen on the past presentations, so.
You're saying that James does a better job?
I'm just saying. There's a, there's a few more moving pieces on those, so this one's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Good, good, because it's getting late.
Kentwood Ventures is requesting a zone change from Garden and Light Industrial I1 to General Industrial I2 for approximately 21 acres of land located at 1150 West Lawrence Street. The proposed site is currently under development for an industrial spec building. It's mostly vertical now. Still working on some site work and some internal improvements. The site's currently in the Garden and Light Industrial, like I mentioned, and this request is simply to expand the type of uses that could be facilitated within that under development building. The I2 zone district offers a wider range of uses and opportunities regarding industrial uses. Additionally, staff will evaluate any proposed uses at the time of any building revisions and/or request for occupancy to ensure the use is properly situated and requires no additional permitting, such as like a CUP or conditional use permit. You can see the site highlighted here. Zoned I1 is the light purple. Dark purple's I2. Request is to go to I2. When looking at the zone change criteria, we look at the, that it's in conformance with the general plan. The actions, first one is actions consistent with the city's general plan goals and policies. Goal MI5 is to encourage appropriate and responsible industrial development in appropriate locations. This site meets that. Goal MI3 is to provoke diversified types of industries and uses. Again, it expands the uses, so it meets that. Second one is it conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within a range of identified uses. The requested zoning of I2 is appropriate in the manufacturing industry land use category. And the final one is the proposed use, or, excuse me, the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the needs of the city. City's current demand for general industrial continues to be significant. This rezon would expand that area. This area, but existing I2 zoned land to the west and to the south. That south area is actually occupied by LKQ, a salvage yard, so we don't feel that this request would have any adverse impact on abutting properties in the area. In regards to public notification, we matter exceeded all requirements. We did not receive any comments on this request. In conclusion, Planning Commission on a 6-0 vote, recommend city council approve the zone change request from Garden and Light Industrial to General Industrial, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone?
I got a comment quick. If you haven't seen it, it's a really big-
It's a beautiful building.
Building, really nice looking. And to be clear, just the uses are still going to be contained in the building, so it's not going to be anything-
Yeah, correct.
It's not a crusher.
Right.
Ooh. Brought up a bad word. Okay. No questions from council, then I'm going to open the public hearing. This is for L6 regarding ordinance number 1178.447. It is a zoning change. Anyone want to speak on this subject? All right. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.446. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to planned area development, property located generally at the southwest corner of Yearly Road and Piet Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 1178.447 as presented.
Second.
She read the wrong-
Yeah, I think she read the wrong one.
I think she read the wrong one.
Something. She read the wrong one.
Yeah.
But I said the right one.
You said the right resolution number.
I said the right one. Let's start all over with take two.
Ash, this is Wes Lawrence and Ash.
Number six.
L6?
L6.
No, it's the wrong ordinance attached.
Say pass it.
This is the right one, Brad?
Yeah, wait, one second. I can find it.
Here.
There you go.
Larry's got it.
No, it's the wrong one, huh? Okay, here, give me. Yeah, I can pull it up. Give me a second. Yeah, I can get it.
It's not 1178.447?
No.
It is, but the description was right.
But she didn't. It has to be read right by her and then read by me.
Yeah, I can find it. Give me a second.
There's a technical difficulty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Take two.
I got it. Give me a, no, I think I can pull it up.
She was reading L4, L3.
And it should be which one? First reading? It should be 47. It should be 47.
This is right.
In our packets. This is right, but she said the one that's attached in the packet.
Did I get it right? Okay, we got it.
This was in my packet. This is what I had in my packet.
Okay. Take two.
Oh.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number 1178.447. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Garden and Light Industrial to General Industrial on property located at 1150 West Lawrence Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Got it.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 1178.447 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. And that concludes most of the business tonight. We have reports left, so I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lavender.
Yeah, real quick, tomorrow night, we have Roberto Rivera in town for a couple days working with our-
We have reports left, so I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lavender.
Yeah, real quick, tomorrow night, we have Roberto Rivera in town for a couple days working with our schools and staff, and we recently did a wellness survey of 1,600 of our high school students. And tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, we'll be hosting a town hall at our governing board room reviewing the results of the wellness survey and some recommendations. So we encourage families to come tomorrow night. Also, Mayor, I know you're a family man, and so I wanted everybody to know that your granddaughter, Dylan, as a freshman, was selected for second team all-conference this year in soccer. So congratulations to you, sir. I know you're very proud of her.
Absolutely. There were three, three Casa Grande girls on that recognized, and they're all freshmen. Well, no one's a junior.
Well, Nisi, the one that was...
Sophomore.
Defensive Player of the Year for playing football was also second team all-conference.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, congratulations to all the girls.
Yep, they had a great season.
They had a great season.
Qualified for the playoffs for the first time since you were probably in middle school. Been a long time, so...
That's a really long time.
2003 is the last time they... When Anthony was playing.
Alright, thank you.
Matt? Just quickly, wanted to report on the youth commission mostly. The day of shredding is going to be April 20th at First American Credit Union on Pinal, so it'll be 9 to 12 as usual, and I wanted to give a little update. They did get their trip to Washington D.C. approved with the help of Larry Raines, Danny and his department over there in community services. We thank you very much for all that, and the generous support from APS and the Casa Grande Union High School District. So they're going to be flying out and meeting with congresspeople and attending the League of Cities, the National League of Cities Conference.
Maybe their senator, too?
And hopefully meeting with senators and congressmen. And getting a tour of some buildings, yeah. So they are very excited, and they've done all the work with a lot of help from Danny and his department, so thanks a lot, Danny.
Alright. Anthony?
Real quick, want to thank Chief McCrory. He's here tonight. Enjoyed him on the other day. He spoke at the Faith Alliance that we had last weekend, so we appreciate him and the work that our police is doing in town, especially with our new police officers on tonight. And so thankful, but enjoyed him as he spoke the other day, him and Officer Leos. Wanted to thank you, too, for all that you do in our community, and other than that, that's it.
Lisa?
And to piggyback on that, Chief McCrory, you were very popular with the Alliance group. It was our largest attended, you know, quarterly meeting, and, you know, our faith community, you know, obviously wants to get involved in how they can make our community safer and better, and I think it was good to, you know, talk, your message about, talking about, you know, families and parenting and, you know, the issues we have with drugs and, you know, weapons and how we have to remember, you know, if we see something, say something, be involved, be engaged. And so that really resonated with our faith community because these pastors that are there, you know, they're preaching to families.
I heard they were there for Chief... I thought they were there for Deputy Chief Leos.
He was there. He was there. They were there for him, too, on the asylum seekers, and of course, that was really good, and thank you. Jody always does such a great job reporting on, you know, what's going on with that, so thank you for doing that. So, and then, and then again, to kind of piggyback on what they're doing in the community, the Fourth Street in Amarillo, that, you know, we had people come to our last meeting concerned about some things that were going on. So, you know, thank you to our staff, you know, code enforcement, you know, police, you know, for cleaning up that property and keeping on top of it and making sure we're arresting those that are, you know, criminal activities over there. We just want to remind you, many of you have seen that former council member Jim Morris passed away. He was a council member for many, many years and a long, long time. Casa Grande City City passed away, and they're going to have a funeral mass for him at St. Anthony's on Saturday at 11 o'clock. So if any of you are available, again, he's done a lot for our community, and so hopefully you can be there to celebrate his life. And, you know, we, you know, there's so many exciting things and new businesses coming to town, and in the paper you probably saw today, this Casa Collective, and I spent two days there this weekend, and, you know, such a neat, you know, environment and just the whole concept of, you know, a neighborhood food park, and they have great, you know, beer on tap and wine, and the food truck options are great. So I really hope you guys get out there and support, you know, some of these new businesses that are coming in. They do a great job there. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thanks, Lisa. Bob?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Listen to you. I just want to remind everybody, we have the inaugural Southwest Taco Fest on March 30th from 1 to 9 p.m. at Dave White Park. So get your tickets, you can get them online. If you need a QR code, you can pick one up in the city's main offices. We've got them out there. And then also, please mark your calendars for the State of the City, March 6th at 1 p.m. It'll be 1 p.m. to about 2:30 at the Community Rec Center, and all your council members will be speaking, so if you want to find out what's going on with the city, what we've been doing and kind of where we're going, it'll be a great opportunity to open the public, so please mark your calendars and come listen. We do have also a meeting, a community meeting for the Casa Grande Carmel Solar Park Public Meeting, which is this week. Is it on Wednesday? Thursday, Thursday night at 5:30 at the Radisson. So it's a solar park that they're building off of Bianco Road, so it's north of I8 in Bianco. It's not technically in the city, but it's right on our border. It is in our planning area, so if you're interested to know what they're doing, please show up. I'm sure they'll have some maps and some other stuff there. And just a kind of update on new home permits. We had 81 in January compared to three the year before. So it was a good month compared to last January when the housing market just bottomed, just fell out, or at least the new home starts fell out. It's come back. We ended up with 800 plus this year, and I think you're estimating 15. Is that what I heard, Paul? 1,500 this year? So it should be a good year for new homes. So that's all I've got. Everybody stay safe out there. Thanks to our police and our fire. You guys keep us safe, we appreciate it. Meeting adjourned. 9:49.
This folder? It was on our... Didn't you have one?
With nothing else?
Yeah, I know there was something.
Maybe Mayor stole mine.
There's nothing in it.
There's nothing in it?
No, there's just a folder. We just got a folder.
Just a folder?